No ma'am.
Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Okay, we have one item under new business this evening. Mr. Hamilton?
Yes ma'am. Tonight, the board will be discussing House Bill 581 and the potential ramifications, as well as benefits of this bill. This was approved by the Georgia General Assembly this past year, and voters approved it in referendum in the November 2024 election. Following from that, the effective date of the bill's passage was January 1st, and the state basically gave counties and municipalities until March 1st to potentially opt out of the requirements of the bill. Counties and municipalities are automatically opted in by March 1st. But if we are to opt out of the bill, there must be three public hearings scheduled prior to March 1st, as well as a legal notice in the newspaper. The closest frame of reference for the process is the requirements to raise property taxes. These are the same requirements and stipulations. The goal here tonight is really for the Board of Commissioners to discuss amongst themselves their thoughts on the House bill. Staff is here to help answer some questions, provide what clarification we can. There is, there are some questions we're able to answer and some we just don't have enough information for yet. But in any case, the process to opt out, if that's the will of the board, must begin in the near future, and therefore this called meeting has been called for discussion purposes.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to say we're missing Commissioner Rickman sadly. His grandmother passed away and there's a funeral tonight, and that's why Chris is not here tonight. So our, we extend our sympathies to his family, but that's why Commissioner Rickman's not here tonight. So going forward, Craig and I, and Debbie as well, just left our senator and our state representative at a New Year's get-together, and House Bill 581 was discussed. And I know we, Craig and I have kind of discussed it just sitting here before the meeting, but I'd like to get Debbie's thoughts and Craig's thoughts on the question that was asked between Bo and Chris, and the answers that they gave us, and where you're all kind of lined up right now.
I don't have any thoughts right now. Let me look at this. I had to leave to take Georgia to dance.
Okay, Craig?
So I missed that question and answer.
And I apologize, I would have been there, but I was in court until 5:30.
No worries.
I mean, to me, it's kind of a, looking at it in a nutshell, is how this is going to hurt and help the taxpayers, and then as fiduciaries of the money of the county, how this is going to hurt our pocketbook possibly. But you know, if you, if the values are increased and the taxes are increased, and pay it, they have to pay more, then I don't know how that's helped us either.
Well, it's a sales tax that we would be, a one penny sales tax.
Right.
The, go ahead Commissioner.
So, so one of my concerns is if we do not opt out, and then the local or the flossed does not pass, there is, there is nothing in place to recoup potential lost revenue.
Except for an increase in the military.
Increase in the military. But I don't know if that fulfills the spirit of what the, the bill was trying to achieve, because it was, the intent, as I understand it, was to...
Trying to make that up.
To, well, it was to prevent home taxes, homestead exempt taxes, from increasing more than the inflation rate on an annual basis. And one of my concerns is it uses the wording that it may include the use of CPI or other federal government index, and it does not specify which index will be used. And there, some of those indexes fluctuate by as much as 3%. So if they say that inflation is at 3% versus 7, that would be a drastically different look at our tax digest. And so, there's a lot of questions inside of the bill that cannot be answered. I did speak with Representative Irwin about potentially having the state's research department be able to do forecast analysis, and they, because they're the only ones, they have not released a lot of the data on how they're going to calculate this stuff, so we can't come up with formalized numbers. If they could help with that, that would give us better insights. To, could we cover that? Because there's, it will not apply to anything other than a primary residence, so second and third homes won't count, it will not count for commercial properties. So there will be a portion of the tax base that will increase at market value. However, not all of it. If you are under the homestead exemption, it will not increase at market rate. It will increase no greater than what the state tax commissioner determines is inflation. But there's questions there. It is not concrete by any means in my eyes, but I also have reluctance to go against what the county voted for. And to me, that is a big piece of this. If I can't definitively say this is what is in there that's going to cause second and third order effects, Stevens County did pass this in referendum. And that is where, you know, I don't know if I can find anything to go directly against what the county voted for.
I see it helping metropolitan areas more than I see it helping rural areas. Just from looking at the language in the bill, I could see how it would help Gwinnett County, or Forsyth, or someplace like that. I'm not, I'm just concerned that, I feel like the bill's, I feel like this is being rushed. We have to have three public hearings by March the 1st if we want to opt out, because every community in the state was opted in by the way the bill was written. So now you're having, everybody's having to opt out that wants to opt out. And I think when people see the language, I voted no for it when I went to vote. I know we're supposed to keep that stuff to ourselves, but you know, maybe just who you voted for, but I voted against it. And when you see the word exemption, you're like, oh wow, I would like an exemption. But just knowing that we have to do three public hearings by March the 1st, or there's no sunset period, there's no ending to this, the way the bill is written right now, correct?
Correct.
That's correct, right?
My understanding is in or out, it's forever.
Yeah, so there's no ending to it. So, you know, and I gave Craig a good example of a previous decision that was made over 20-plus years ago. A group of county commissioners voted to sell the water to the city here in Stevens County. I don't even, I couldn't even tell you all five members of that board, but that group voted at that time to sell the water to the city, okay? So it's taken a lot of years to, for that to see, to show that it's been a negative impact for the county digest, because, and it is, because it's a way that we were raising money, that the county had a resource, it was put in and spent by county taxpayers. And so 25 years later, we don't have that. And so I look at this, and I look at future boards that don't even know, that they're even going to run yet, they don't know any of us, but our kids and our grandkids that'll maybe be in leadership roles one day in the community, and they're going to look back to this decision that we had to make pretty quick, because March 1st deadline. And it's either going to be a really good one, or it's going to be like, man, they didn't have enough information, I wish they would have waited. I didn't have enough information when I voted, when I just checked the yes on the box to Craig's point, 60% of the county voted for this at the ballot, and I understand that. So I'm just concerned.
They didn't even know what they were voting for.
And you want to, you don't want to make a general statement and say that, no, they didn't know what they're voted, they voted for. But did they know? Did they really, you know, did they really understand, you know, what kind of impact? This could have a very positive impact for the next 30-plus years, or it couldn't. I just don't know that we still have enough information yet. When you talk about CPI and some of the language that's put in there, that this is going to be, you know, and I love penny sales tax. Other people come into our communities and they spend money here. Is it going to force people here to go buy, on that penny sales tax, to go buy a car in Cornelia versus at Mike Jones Ford here in Toccoa because of the penny sales tax? I don't know. When you're talking about an $80,000 car, are they going to go out of town to buy a car? Is that going to impact the dealership? I don't know.
I'm looking at this, and, okay, so what types of communities would benefit from this floss? Communities that wish to supplant property taxes, sales tax would benefit from floss. Policy decision that would be expected to shift some of the tax burden imposed on the local government's property owners to those who make purchases within such. Accordingly, sales tax revenues derive disproportionately from those living outside of the local government's jurisdiction, would expect to see a net benefit for its property owners by shifting the tax burden to consumers, whereas those communities that have proportionately few property owners among its many resident consumers, find only a shifting of the tax burden within the jurisdiction.
But that's just talking about the floss, correct? I mean, that's not talking about this cap on the assessments, which is a totally different issue. We're not just talking about a penny sales tax.
There are actually, there are actually two separate aspects of the bill.
That's inaccurate. We're talking about that, the ability to do that, along with capping property tax assessments at an inflation rate, which we don't even have the data available to us. That's something that Christians stressed us before this meeting was, look, I know you're going to ask us for this, but we don't have it. We don't know what our financial impact of this is going to be if we don't opt out. We have no idea what it's going to be.
What did Dean say?
The same thing, that there's, there's really no answer as to what the financial impact is going to be yet. It's based on January 1st values is where you see it starting, and WNGAP doesn't even get that information in until later on in the year, after the March 1st deadline.
I think it's April, she told me.
It's April.
April, and she will get the data to be able to start formulating what the impact would be.
And there are two different aspects to this bill that should be mentioned, just, just for the, the record, for folks to understand. The first is the cap on the, the value of the property, and that will be, like Commissioner Oglesby said, based on whatever rate the commissioner determines is the insurance. So it will cap it at that, maybe it's 3%, maybe it's 4, I don't know. It will cap it at that, and the goal, of course, is that the increase in the digest would offset that. But of course, that's assuming you're going to see an increase in the digest and, and other aspects. The, the other focus of the bill is the floss. It should be understood that opting in by default gives you the option to implement a floss. You still have to come to an IGA with your local municipalities, you have to enter into a referendum, and the voters have to approve it. So just like the voters approved the exemption, the voters will have to approve that sales tax. And then, you know, of course, that, that involves, you know, helping them understand what that would, would be, but, but it's not just as simple as the floss automatically comes into being. And then there's the separate exemption. The floss is great, you know, it would be a great revenue offsetter, and certainly lower property taxes substantially. However, the floss is only allowed by right for the first five-year cycle. After that first five-year cycle, your local delegation has to put in new local legislation to authorize that floss again, and then you still have to go through the same IGA process and the same referendum process. So you can get it the first time, but then you have to get your legislators to actually approve it the second time.
And it's my understanding as well, that with the floss, there is a requirement for a burden of proof on the county to show how that is offsetting the property tax, and that the state has audit ability to ensure that if we pass the floss by referendum, that there has to be a very deliberate and articulated way of how we're using that in lieu of the property tax.
The state actually recommends that you put it in your IGA as to how that will be accomplished. The easiest way is to show it on the tax bill, to offset it as a, on the tax bill itself. But, but yes, that's absolutely right. So again, the discussion needs to be had with the understanding that you may not even get a flossed. It's, it's a potentiality.
Is, and I, and I'm guilty of not doing this, has anybody looked and seen what is the no later than day of us making a decision as a board for, to be able to meet those three public hearing requirements?
If you're looking at your regular meetings, it would, you have your, your last meeting in January, and your two meetings in February, and you would have to have that resolution passed by your second meeting in February to be able to make it for March. Now, you could schedule called meetings in between. There has to be a week between the meetings, but if you just follow your regular schedule, it's really your next meetings after next week's meeting is, are the only regular meetings you'd be able to utilize.
Okay.
You have three.
So really by Tuesday?
Not this upcoming Tuesday, Tuesday, the 28th.
Okay.
Is when you'd have to start your public hearing, but don't forget, we have to advertise at least a week in advance in the newspaper. So there, there are certain legal requirements that we have to have even before the public hearings can be held.
So we'd have to back it up seven days from the 28th to get our actual decision date?
It would actually have to be, yes sir, it'd have to be a bit before that, just because the newspaper runs on a Thursday and our meetings are on a Tuesday. So it would, it would have to be very soon.
I don't know. I need to go back to my first comment, because I went back to capping the tax assessments. Us homeowners would want that to happen. They go out and we look at the property and we assess it and assign a new value to it that's higher, and they have to pay more money. Back to that. So that hurts the county, because that's more money we can give. That we can spend on everybody, but those individual homeowners are the ones hurt by that. Go back to, if we don't go out, and so if we don't cap it, we don't go out there and we have to send, you know, our guy out there to look at the value of these properties when it increases. And then if we don't do that, we get fined by the state, the county does, and we have to pay money for not going out there, reassessing the property to increase the value. So I don't, to me, I feel like I'm being blackmailed, and I don't like it. But I mean, that's in a nutshell, how I feel about it. I don't, I don't like it.
I agree that it does feel different to have, being forced to opt out as opposed to opt in.
Well, when I feel blackmailed, even before we get to the force of opt out and opt in. And we abstain.
What's your thoughts?
I feel like we're, we don't have a lot of information. I, like Craig, you know, feel very much that when the public votes for something, I don't feel like it's my job to go against that. I think that's, that's where I struggle with this, is it was voted on, the specific language was not voted on. I mean, it was a very generalized question. I can't recall exactly how it was worded, but it's very generalized. You know, would you support a referendum that, you know, put in place a homes, an additional homestead floating exemption? Well, that sounds great, but the more information I get on this and look at other areas that have done something similar, it's concerning. It rewards people who stay long-term, it puts a lot of pressure on people who purchase a home later because they are taxed at what they buy it for. I think people in our area have already experienced similar things, you know, with purchasing of a home and a new valuation getting out there, and then their neighbors paying what they paid, like back in 1984, and they're paying something based on a purchase price, it's, it's going to exacerbate that situation. I'm, I'm just, I am concerned what it would mean for growth in our area. I think if we stay in it and don't opt out, I don't know that it's really promoting people coming to our area to buy new homes, because they're going to be taxed at a totally different rate than, you know, us that have been here a long time. And it puts a lot of burdens on our businesses, because this only applies to our homeowners. It's a homeowner, homestead tax exemption.
Primary too.
It's your primary residence. So the people who have rental properties, we have one that's, you know, there are people on this board that have rental properties, people who have businesses, they're going to have to carry a brunt of...
And that's your folks that have Holmes and Curry Club.
Yeah, it's our second home. They're going to have to carry a very large burden, so that, that's where I have concerns.
I'm feeling burdened already, so.
The way, currently, the way it is this year, though, the, if a home is appraised at an increased value, there is no cap currently.
Right.
So it doesn't harm someone from it being appraised at purchase price, because that's the way it already is. So if we are looking at, you know, inequity between two homes of at purchase price versus at frozen, I shouldn't use the word frozen, because it's not, it, it increases at a lower percentage, it's capped at the rate it can, can increase at. But that purchase price now, it can be assessed at that value, or am I incorrect?
The, the law does require a county-wide reassessment every three years.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm more concerned 15 years down the road, is what, like, a lot of articles I've looked at have put into place is...
20 years.
Yeah, where, where we do have a cap.
Not the water.
Because it, we don't know how, there isn't an end date, there isn't, so it's going to make the inequity between properties huge in 10, 15 years.
Definitely gets worse the longer, the time. It is not, it's not really linear, I don't think.
No.
You can't get divorced.
No.
Well, not from this bill, we can't. I, I mean, I'm just trying to use just, you know, some country stuff here, but...
Everything's subject to change.
I mean, but the way it's written right now, can you divorce this bill if you...
It would take, it would take another state referendum, because this is...
It would take a state referendum.
This is an amendment to the state constitution.
If it, if it starts looking ugly, I believe that would happen.
It's an amendment, you have to do, this is constitutional stuff.
We, we've done it before, so I understand.
But it would have to be on the state level.
And it has to be approved.
If we wanted out of it later, we'd have to, there'd have to be something.
And then, and understand this, well, Craig was there, you were there, you just missed this part, you said...
Part, tell me what was said.
But our, I mean, our senator's for it. He hopes all of our counties do it. So you want to go back to the senator and say, hey, we want to opt out? You're going to convince him to go help us opt out in this community? I mean, he's hoping that, and I, and I'm fine with him having that mindset. You know, he knows way more about this than I do. I wish I knew more to make a decision by March the 1st, but he's hoping that every community stays in this, that, that we opt, you know, that we stay in it, that there's no opt out, that's what he said.
How does this help the state of Georgia?
I don't, I don't know.
It's got to be something.
He may want us to opt in because he knows this is what's best for each community. I just still feel like I'm in such a time crunch, I just don't feel comfortable with it right now. I mean, this may be the best thing for every community in the state, but I just, I don't have enough information if we're having three public hearings, you know, so...
Well, we still have three public hearings, we could change our mind during that time. They're just sitting down here to tell us all about it.
Would the first one have to...
It would need to be January 28th is when you would start your public hearings.
So...
I mean, I was actually, I was encouraged by Bo's enthusiasm, you know, that he's, hopes that every community, you know, stays in it. I was, I was actually, it kind of helped me as far as this fence riding stuff, so I was encouraged by his enthusiasm and, you know, but I just feel like we're, I feel like I'm being rushed, and so...
I would like to reach out to the Capitol for their research team to do the analysis on Stevens County and see what numbers they can pull, because they, I feel like have a better answer of what inflation rate they're going to use, because it's coming out of the Capitol and not from us. Yeah, it's them.
If you want to work on this in the next couple of weeks, I'd be glad to, to, you know, join, join with you and work on this and help us to make a decision that's best for the citizens here.
Yeah, because this is just too much to, I need to talk to some people.
So I'm looking at the calendar, if we had to do the first public hearing on the 28th, that would mean that the decision would really need to be made by the 21st, which is the Tuesday prior, to at least, and I'm, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's no harm in us having a public hearing, and then we can just...
You don't have to approve the, the resolution. You don't even have to get a resolution on your agenda. You do have to put the notice out that there is the intent to opt out, and that's why the public hearings are being held. But yeah, no, the 28th, the notice would need to go out actually on the 21st to be able, well, no, actually, it would need to be in, really, it would need to be in the 16th newspaper, which would be next week, just because the, the newspapers will be on the 23rd, which is not seven days before your, your meeting, so you would have to have it on the 16th.
Can we have, James is here, right, behind that pole right there. James, could you come up and speak? I mean, is James, I'd like to get his thoughts as our finance director in, in just, just your thoughts on this bill, and how it would, the positive impact that you see, and the even negative impact that you possibly could fore, if there was a forecast for that as well?
As you all stated, it's, I've heard from, I'm in classes and conferences and webinars, and since the citizens voted on it, of course, I'm looking at y'all's position. However, I know, I sent an email to Christian, I think y'all have those statistics. Outweighs the 2% increase, whole digest with the commercial. Future growth is all a bunch of unknowns, as we've talked about tonight. Rates is then going to be homestead. Is it there, or is it going to be all commercial property, which is valued at millions of dollars? Of course, we don't know what the economy's going to do as far as the county's expense budget. To know is that, as Tara said, at worst case, we could always freeze everything, and it's not what we know, not what we need. Also, if we don't, if we opt out and then think down the road, well, let's benefit our homeowners, we can have a local homestead, another homestead exemption increase. Always an option down the road, of course. Kind of the same thing, as, except for being a 2%, or max value increase of 2%. Statewide thing, and 2%, and 2%, if that's what the...
So would this be an immediate drop to the military rate if we stay in this?
Not until we get digest numbers, it's hard, it's hard to know. I don't know what the values of properties are going to be as far as the value.
What does Dean think? She doesn't know either, nobody knows.
Nobody else, nobody knows the future, nobody can predict the values until we have the values.
Well, that's, I just invited Mr. Hatchet, maybe he'll be able to make time to, but he's going to be in session.
They start session next week, right?
Yeah. Maybe, maybe he could, we could zoom him in, speak on this matter, from Atlanta, from the Capitol, right where it's happening. Tell them we won't know what they're trying to do to us.
But the only way we have the ability to put a, the floss on the ref... But the only way we have the ability to put a, the floss on the referendum as an option is if we opt in.
Yes, right.
So if we opted out and chose to try to do something at a local level that we controlled, we would not have the ability for an additional sales tax. So everything would still reside on property owners. So there would be really no relief. We may could shuffle it around on which property owner, but it would still be, there would be no help from somebody shopping that lives in South Carolina.
So happens is similar to, you know, and you hear people talking about it all the time, they wish that we just have a, you know, a tax where everybody had to pay, we just tax on goods or whatever, you know, so that everybody had to pay and the burden wasn't on the taxpayer. And I think the people have been yelling for this for a long time, a lot of people have. And so is, is this, how comparative is this to that, that thought?
I think this originated with the sticker shock of the home values increased after the, cost of goods and building products increased drastically, homeowners, cost of new house doubled. So all that increased, everybody's values increased and all of a sudden their tax bill increased. So wait a minute, the state said, we've got to freeze this, we've got to do something about it.
So we either get to pay taxes on the high dollar stuff that we're buying or our homes.
That increases as well. The other option-
Or both.
We won't be eligible for a floss if we'd opt out, but there always is a second sploß if needed, we obviously have to vote for that as well. Extra pennies in that way if needed.
Okay.
The way where there's a sploß or this floss, we have this, IGA has been placed with all the cities involved as well, we have to have 50% of the population of the cities, which Martin and Tavallon being small of us and go agree on those IGAs, whether it's a floss or a sploß or anything else, it's just as more, we have to do.
Do we know what the city's going to do?
What's the city going to do, Doug? Unless somebody adopted.
I believe that the whole Texas Census Office and their day-to-day jobs is still going to be the same, they're still, I basically have two running values.
Well, I think their job's going to be the same, but I just, again, I'm just going to stress, like, there is going to come a time, if this stays in place, that there is a massive inequity going on, massive. I mean, and I just don't think that's right. I mean, I don't think that you, you know, we have never given a long, you know, more of a homestead exemption based on how long you've had the house. That's what this is going to be. Because if somebody comes and buys a brand-new home in 10 years, people are incentivized to stay in their home longer, it's not going to help the real estate market, I can tell you that, it's going to make it a blooming nightmare in 10 years. And it's going to make it extremely competitive. I don't want people saying, I don't want to move to Stevens County because 10 years ago, they stayed in this bill. I'm concerned about that.
We already lose, we already lose industry because of the millage rate.
To speak to the potential, and I can't read state legislatures' minds of why this started, but post-COVID, home values increased like 60% in one year. And if, this is from best I recall from an event I was at a year and a half ago, but I think the average is it's supposed to increase between like 4% to 6% a year. And it went from 4% to 6% a year all the way to 60. And so that is the sticker shock that I think you're speaking of, of we had these appraisals that we do now. So like, we're guilty of this already if we go and assess a home that hasn't been assessed in three years. When you assess a home in 2019 and then you come back in '22 to assess it, that, that home may have doubled in price in some unique circumstances, but it's at least gone up by 50, 60%. That, I believe, is kind of the spirit of what they're trying to cap and bring it back down to inflation. I don't know if we're going to see home prices continue to go up by 50 to 80% in single years.
Let's hope not.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, I'm not expecting a global pandemic.
But knowing, but not knowing what that rate is would be, that's what we would need to know to forecast what that would be, so.
I agree, that's what they're trying to avoid, but I mean, hopefully, we're not going to have a once in a millennium event again. I mean, bird flu is out there, so.
Any other thoughts, James?
No, sir. But I mean, I got some data and information if you don't need any more information. More questions, I can come back up.
Thank you. Christian?
I mean, I'll just echo what Chairman Simmons said. Right here down the road, a year or two from now, it looks fine. But 10, 20 years down the road, you're going to have one house that's going to be valued at $600,000 and another that's paying $200,000. And they may be worth the same in the market. That is a huge inequity on, on the taxpayers and the burden has shifted, which could, could have an effect on the market.
But yet we're conflicted on voting on this.
If it, I mean, I think where we're, I think where there's a conflict is I think we all that sit at this table have an urge to go one direction or the other. Where I have a conflict is we put it on a ballot. And I think that's where some of our struggle is. I wish that it had been, I know the media reached out to us even during the voting about the referendums because the wording was poor, it really didn't get the spirit of what they were asking across. And I think this is one of those situations. I don't think anyone, you know, my parents would benefit greatly from this, but I don't think that they would want future home buyers saying, I don't want to move to Stevens County because they stayed, opted into this House bill and my, I'm going to be taxed way up here while Mr. and Mrs. Simmons stay way down here. I mean, what is right about that picture? Nothing to me.
Yeah, but it wouldn't, I mean, I think if they were going to buy a house and anywhere they bought it, if they opted, if another community, they still going to have to pay that, so why would it matter?
Oh, I agree, but if-
They're still going to have to pay it, they might.
If they found a county that opted out, though, that's not going to be the case.
I would be curious as what percentage of homeowners in Stevens County go 10, 20 years without moving? I mean, I know it's, I'm not saying it's single digits, I'm just, I'm curious to know what type of percentage of that-
I can afford to move now.
Well, I mean, that's the thing is, they say that-
There you go.
They're incentivizing people to stay longer.
Right.
This actually created a whole community of people who just plop down and never moved.
Yeah.
I don't know, there's a lot of, I mean, I think my gut is to say, let's go ahead and schedule the first public hearing, see if we can get some more information from Senator Hatchet, maybe we can get some additional information from the Capitol. I do not feel like anybody sitting here feels like they have all the information to make an informed decision and, you know, we are the stewards of the taxpayers' money, you know? That would, that would be my direction to ask for.
And just to be clear, we will, because the way the legal notice is written, we will have to schedule all three of the public hearings and-
In the first notice.
Yes, in the first notice. So, so we'll just have to go ahead and schedule all three of them. And, you know, as you move along, if you guys decide in what direction you want to, you want to move, we can get that, you know, that documentation prepared.
Did they give us any direction as, like, if we were to get through two and we just say no, I mean, do we have to then advertise again that the third one is canceled or we hereby revoke our opting out or do we have any direction with that?
Do you know anything?
I don't, I will try to find out an answer to that. My knee-jerk is that I don't think having a hearing automatically means you have to opt out. I think that's the purpose of the hearings.
Right.
It's so that you can make, you can make a more informed decision.
You have to approve that referendum.
And you would have to ultimately approve it.
I honestly think that you only have to have the hearings if you are ultimately going to go through with opting out.
To the final result.
I think if you decide, if made, were able to make a decision sooner and you decided not to have the rest of the hearings, I don't think that you would-
There's no direction though on it, really.
Yeah, not that, but I'll try to get confirmation of that and confirm that.
Okay, guys, I'm really sorry, but-
You have to go.
We're late for church and George is about to have a fit about it and I'm sorry.
There's really no-
I think we've kind of reached a consensus.
Yeah, there's really no detriment to having all three of the public hearings. I mean, you can have all three of them and then we can-
And never sign it.
And then we can just decide not to have that action item for the resolution if you don't. And then you've just continued to open up the input to the public, which is, you know, I know your goal in every action you have, so, you know, we could just hold all of them, discuss it, and then if you guys wanted that resolution to go on that last agenda for approval, we could get that on there. It is a very tight timeframe from your last meeting until when that would need to go to the state.
Any additional discussion on this item?
I'll reach out to Representative Irwin to, about the Capitol, the, get the data that he may be able to get.
Okay.
I think we've got matters from citizens.
We do. Ms. Jeffers, you turned in a sheet to address the board.
So I came to talk to you about this, some, you know, my degree from Georgia Tech, master's in business, know a little bit about finances, it's what my MBA was in. And I think y'all are right on the right page with things. As someone who moved in from outside of the county, we initially bought a house that was on the lake that was valued at, the assessment was 75% of value and all of our neighbors were at 50% of value. So, you know, it's real hard to go argue that your house is not worth what it's worth when you've paid more than what it is, but yet it's inequitable if nobody else has been. So I was in, I was in a situation where our neighbors had houses twice the size of our house and yet we were paying the same amount of taxes as our neighbors. So, you know, for, for half the size of a house. And so, you know, I've personally experienced that here and I think that looking at the house that we sold, it is still, it is assessed at less than half what they purchased it at right now.
I'm sure they're glad of that.
Oh, I mean, it was already between taxes and insurance over $1,000 a month for us. So it was like, that's a lot, you know? So there, the millage and the assessments really need to be reworked in the county big time. You know, I mean, the assessments can go up, millage can go down, but I also was the head of the Trump captains here and I consider myself pretty up on things, try to be up on things. And if it probably would make y'all feel a lot better, I voted yes and really did not understand what I was voting for. And that's somebody that's pretty well-educated, really didn't, I don't think it was explained. I don't think, you know, looking at it from a county standpoint, what y'all are up against personally, I would not, I would opt out. I'm sorry that it's, couldn't be an opt-in rather than more of a negative sounding, opt out. But I, you know, for the length of time that it goes on, I do like the fact of thinking about maybe we go for another penny sales tax on things rather than all of the burden being on just the homeowners. I see that we have the high-end homes in Currie, we have the high-end homes on the lake, and then we have more or less starter homes. And even our starter homes, like, I have homes on my road that are assessed at maybe $60,000, a 1,300-square-foot house. You couldn't buy a house anywhere in this county for $60,000 that's livable. So the assessments, what you're saying, the person that's been here a long time is already getting rewarded over that person that has been here for, so that was one point. The second thing I wanted to talk to y'all about is the ratio of mobile homes that are coming in and the way a mobile home is valued in your tax assessment over the way a stick built. I talked to a very reputable broker here called her and she said that eight out of 32 of the sales, most recent sales, were mobile homes. Your mobile homes, if their land is not attached to it, it might be worth, let's just say, $175,000 one year, year two, it goes down to 170, year three, it goes down below, 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 below. So you are buying a depreciating asset. So if 25% of our homes are going to, by their assessment, are going to depreciate of what's coming in, are you understanding the math behind what I'm trying to get at there?
I understand, it's like personal property, it's not real estate, it's considered personal property like a car.
Exactly, it's considered personal property like a car. So you've got a fourth of your new, of our houses that are being added to our community right now that are depreciating assets, not necessarily appreciating assets. So there again is going to be disproportionate to the property owners that are there. So those were the two concerns that I see, you know? And also confession, if I didn't understand it, I feel like if y'all did a good job, if you did opt out of explaining to the community what we really voted on, I don't think many of us really understood. I don't think you're going to get a lot of negative pushback.
Thank you.
And then the other thing I wanted to say is I wanted to compliment Vince. I had a little bit of a nuisance ordinance thing that I contacted him about and he was out on it immediately. But I did have a request of the commissioners. I would like that if we could take the whole county as a whole, divide it into X number of roads and have the roads just patrolled rather than it having to become a personal thing between possibly, if the neighbors know that nothing ever happens unless somebody complains, then they know that somebody around them has complained about something. And I just think that it would be a lot nicer if we just went around and wrote up enforcements based on, you know, what we see, just we're randomly going around. People could still make reports, but it wouldn't have to be a personal vendetta against someone.
I'll address that, I mean, we try to do that, but Vince and his deputy, I mean, they're covering animal control, we don't have the manpower for, I mean, his schedule, he is packed. So, I mean, I know that if he sees something, he's not just ignoring it, but I mean, two people covering entire county and, you know, responding to calls and responding to animal control calls in the city and in the county, I don't know that that is feasible, but I understand what, where you're coming from because it's not comfortable to be put in that position as a neighbor.
That's something we can talk about.
Yeah, certainly we can maybe identify some priority areas for them if and when they have-
Free time.
Free time.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like it to at least be not known that, or said that we are patrolling more of that than, well, we don't do this unless somebody complains. You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am.
It's just the perception.
Absolutely.
And, you know, a lot of times, from what we've seen, Barbara's here too, with a property that it had a camper on it to start with. Well, then, you know, it just, we went through everything, but there's been two arrests made there. So the point, and there's children in that home. So I think that that is one of the things that, you know, it's like the see something, say something. And it takes courage to stand up and say something. It takes courage to, you know? And my husband and I are more than willing to help people, help our neighbors. Y'all put, at this particular site, y'all put three dumpsters, y'all paid for the dumpsters. I told them, get the dumpsters from the county if you can. My husband did $2,500 worth of trackhoe, putting the stuff in the dumpster for the people. And then they hauled in junk cars out front. So, you know, but have it sit there for a length of time, it's just unfortunate, you know? And I don't like to have to complain about people, but, you know, I also, I'm willing to help, you know? I don't think, nobody's ever come and done $2,500 worth of work for us for free. I've never had that great of a neighbor, so.
Thank you for being a good neighbor.
And we appreciate the compliment on Mr. Dabasto, so.
Truly, I didn't understand it and I think if you did a good job of educating the community, I don't think you're going to get the pushback.
I'll just tell everybody a Georgia Tech graduate with MBA didn't understand it.
That's, that's fine, you can use my name. I didn't, I, it would have understood if it had been explained, but reading it-
It was tough.
It was not clear.
It was not clear.
Thank you.
Write these down real quick.
It did sound really nice.
That's why I voted no for it.
It sounded too good to be true for Chuck. Any other matters? Okay, need for executive session? Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? Thank y'all for being here tonight.